And we're live on all our channels.
Hey, we're ready to go.
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm gonna call this April 13th, 2021 City of Gallatin Council Meeting to Order. At this time, I'm gonna read Governor Lee's Executive Order. Pursuant to Governor Lee's Executive Order Number 16 and subsequent orders, in the need to limit the community spread of COVID-19, the April 13th, 2021 Gallatin Council Committee Meeting, will be held by electronic means. The meeting will be livestreamed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the council and citizens of Gallatin. Join the Zoom meeting at https://us02web.zoom.us/j/87622490994 or dial 1-470-250-9358 or 1-470-3812552 and enter webinar ID 87622490994. And at this time, we'll vote on that and roll call at the same time.
We need a motion.
No, we do, don't we?
Most approve.
Second.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Hello? Yes, and here, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Councilman Alexander. Is Councilman Alexander here tonight? No, I can't tell.
No, he's DM.
So he may not be here yet, okay? Then Councilman Thane.
Yes, and here.
Councilwoman George.
Yes, and here.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes, and present.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes, and here.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes, and here.
We have six eyes, say Ronays, and we have a quorum.
All right, thank you, Connie. This time, we need approval of the minutes for January 12th, 2021 Council Committee Meeting and the March 9th, 2021 Council Committee Meeting.
I move we approve.
In March 23rd, 2021 Council Committee Meeting.
I move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and second. All those in favor? Roll call, I'm sorry, roll call. You forgetting about that?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Thane.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Six eyes and zero nays.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we will do public recognition, so if anybody wants to speak, please give your name and address for the record. I'll turn it over to Mr. Hinchell.
Thank you, sir. If you're on your computer, you'll use the Raise Your Hand function by mousing over the bottom of your screen. For those that are on their cell phones, I see one, you'll hit star nine to raise your hand, and then I'll call your name. And we'll get started right now. I do not see anyone that has raised their hand. Give you another couple of seconds. And it looks like no one is interested in speaking right now.
Okay, thank you. This time, we'll close public recognition. Mayor's comments.
Thank you. I have just a few things to share with you all this evening. First, I want to share a letter with you from the City of Mount Juliet. This is from Kenny Martin, who is the city manager over there. It says, Mayor Brown, council members and staff, this is just a small note of thanks for being there when we needed it most. The selfless passion, tremendous help, and the friendship you provided because of the March 3rd, 2020 tornado disaster our city endured will never be forgotten. If we can ever be of assistance, please do not hesitate to call upon us. You'll recall that we did lend a lot of aid to them back when, and as you, I think I mentioned at the last meeting, Public Works was helping in Portland this past week, and so we're appreciative of efforts our departments are able to lend to other cities during their time of need. Also, want to ask this council, and I think it's okay to do here, so you can correct me if it's not. When you all approved the street closure for the farm-to-table dinner for the Gallatin Chamber, apparently there was a wrong date on that. I believe the correct date should be September 18th. Are you okay with just saying what you approved is for whatever date that they, is the right date?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I will let them know that that approval stands unless Ms. McCauley shakes her head no. Okay, she says that's okay. Um, I also want to mention to you all that the indoor pool will be reopening finally on Thursday. I know that's gonna be a relief for a lot of citizens and for our staff over at the Civic Center, so that's some good news. I think it opens at 5:00 AM on that day. Also, I want to tell you, and this is really exciting news, I think, the Gallatin Police Department this week was able to welcome back Daniel Green to patrol. He was the officer who was injured a lot, 17 months ago, and was hit on the hit making a stop over on 109 or Airport Road. I don't know what we called it at that point, but he was hit and very seriously injured, and I just, I have so much respect for that young man to even want to come back and do that again, but he really did, and so I love the passion there, and I'm so glad that he's come back to continue serving here in Gallatin. He has been working in a different capacity for the police department, but he actually is now back on patrol. So if you see him or have the opportunity, please welcome him back and congratulate him because he worked really, really hard to recover and be able to do what he loved to do again. Finally, the last thing that I want to mention to you all is that I would ask that you keep the Suter family and the Wagner family in your prayers. I think most people know that Ken Wagner has lost his mother, and our dear friend has, Richard Suter, who has done so much for our city, is suffering some health challenges, so just remember those families if you would. I know they both would appreciate it, and that would conclude mayor's comments.
Good, thank you, mayor. At this time, we'll move on to the agenda. Item number one is ordinance number 02104-22. Bill McCord. Bill, there?
He's muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, great. All right, can you also see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great, okay. This first item I want to present tonight is a request for rezoning with the preliminary master plan for Northfield Church. Northfield Church is located on the, well, let's call it the north side of Nashville Pike, across from the Savannah mixed-use development. Most of you may remember this was originally College Heights Church, and Northfield Church began, took over the building and did some renovations a few years ago, and now they want to make some modifications to their campus. They're asking for rezoning of almost 18 acres of their property and a preliminary master development plan for a little over 20 acres. They have a small portion of their property which currently is zoned MRO, and they're requesting to rezone the roughly 18 acres from R20 Low Density Residential to MRO. This is an outline of the location of the property and showing the church on the, we'll call it the western part of the property, and the portion that's zoned MRO is adjacent to Pilot View. It's just called Pilot View, it's not Drive or Lane, and they own that corner lot of that subdivision. The plan of development associated with the zoning includes renovation and expansion of the church building. They are going to provide a number of related services for the church, and I'll allow the applicant to make a presentation, and they would, they have a presentation they want to make as soon as I finish mine, and will describe in more detail the services that they pose to render. Part of their plan also includes not only in expanding the church, but also the services that will be associated with the church, community services, and they also are proposing to construct some multifamily residential units on the back portion of the property, which will have a driveway from Pilot View. I'll describe those a little bit more, a little bit later. The renovations to the church includes some facade changes and interior build-out and modifications by adding a new facade, front facade. This top photograph here shows you what the building would look like from the side view and the two-side view areas, and this would be the west side, I believe, and then this other lower photograph is the east side. The applicant proposes to construct multifamily units in the rear portion in two-story buildings, and these would be multifamily units that would be essentially clients, I would guess, is maybe a good way of describing it, of the church, and they have a social service program that I will leave to them for explaining. The rendering that shows generally how this campus feel of the multifamily, which would begin, again, be located behind the church building off to, closer to Pilot View, and it would be a closely knit community and have access directly to and from the church. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the master plan with a number of conditions, which are included in your agenda package and described under the draft ordinance. So the Planning Department and Planning Commission do recommend approval of this rezoning and master development plan.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Craig, I got one, and I'll talk about it now, and then when they get out here to make their presentation, they can discuss it. But looking at this real closely, one of the requirements from Planning Commission was a sidewalk on the Nashville Pike. And I understand why they want to do this, but on this side of the road, there's not any traffic, any walking traffic on this side of the road, and I would like for planning or whoever to look at possibly connecting the sidewalk from the multifamily across to through their property, a lighted sidewalk, a really nice one, I'm talking about, a lighted sidewalk that comes through their property and all the way up to Nashville Pike. There is gonna be a crosswalk at Nashville Pike that's gonna be put in by the developers across Nashville Pike. They're gonna put a red light and a crosswalk there, and I would love to see this sidewalk be put from this development, this multifamily development through their property, a lighted crosswalk through their property and up to the, up to the crosswalk there, so these folks can actually cross over to the retail establishments that's across the street. So that's just something I would love for them to look at and see if we can't discuss, instead of putting it along Nashville Pike, if we can't come through their property, put a lighted sidewalk and a nice one up to Nashville Pike where they're gonna have the red light and a crosswalk across Nashville Pike.
I can address that a little bit. If you can see this slide that's shown on the screen here, which shows the multifamily units in the buildings here in the blue boxes, there will be a sidewalk around there from their parking lot, which connects to all the buildings, and then it will extend to the west to the church campus itself, so directly connect to the church, and then there is a sidewalk on the east side of the church and down to a future ramp and potential crossing at what's called Gordon's Crossing on the other side of the road. So when that signal is installed, that sidewalk would be able to be constructed either with or apart from the improvements to the intersection when those are warranted. So they do provide that. There is a condition of approval that they build a constructive sidewalk, which we apply to all development along Nashville Pike and all our, all streets, almost all streets in the city with the exception of older developed residential areas, but that, with that sidewalk, that's one of the conditions, and it would extend from Pilot View to the west boundary of their property on or adjacent to Nashville Pike.
Well, Bill, here's my question, you're gonna have the crosswalk there, and there's nothing on that side where Pilot View is. There's nobody gonna be walking on that side of the road, and my question is, you got a lot of grade problems there, and you got other things that's involved, and I'd just like to see a nicer sidewalk with lighting and everything else from those apartments coming up through their property up to that sidewalk that goes across the street.
You gotta look at future development, too.
There, where, they own the property there on the corner, Craig, there's no future development there.
I'm talking about, you know, going to the, going towards Hendersonville.
Isn't that Rogers Group?
That, that's not the side we're talking about, Craig, we're talking about, we're talking about the side that goes from there back down to the lake where there's nothing there, that's where they want to put the sidewalk, that's all the property they own. The sidewalk going toward Hendersonville, they don't have, I mean, they don't have anything past the church property there, that's what I'm saying, so they're wanting to put a sidewalk from there back to Pilot Knob. There's nothing there, there's nobody to walk on it.
And past it, isn't that Rock Quarry or Rogers Group Land?
That's what I'm saying, there's not, they're, on that side of the road, I mean, it's, it doesn't take common sense to understand, there's nothing, and nobody gonna walk on that side of the road, so I'd like to see a nicer crosswalk and a nicer lighted sidewalk that goes from that multifamily up to where the crosswalk is, it just makes sense, or there's, there's no other reason to put one on Nashville Pike, there's no other reason to put one on Nashville Pike.
Did we make the other development bill do that right there, the office next door?
The Rogers Group office was built.
Not them, the other one, Nastic.
There's, I'm not sure about that, that business that was there before. I know that the city required sidewalks to be placed on either side of Pilot View. I don't believe that any other business that's located on the north side, I call it the north side of Nashville Pike, was constructed with a sidewalk.
Okay.
Because, again, our code only took effect in, I think, in 98, or maybe the sidewalk part in 2000. So, but other, all the other properties up and down Nashville Pike, we've required to construct sidewalks when they're.
I understand, but those sidewalks go somewhere, no sidewalks do something, this one wouldn't. That's my only point, this sidewalk wouldn't be for anything, Bill, except for to be there.
What does Paige have to say? You're muted, Paige.
Yeah, thank you. I was just gonna say, and Bill, you actually may know this just from, from personal exposure, but that, that waterway that goes under that bridge right there and those soccer fields, I mean, those are areas that people may wish to walk to in the future, and certainly if we're getting that Caldwell done, like it's, like we hope to get it done someday. I mean, I would see that particularly a development like that would be interested in being able to travel down to that, and so, I mean, I kinda... Am I, am I on track with that, Mr. McCord?
Um, yeah, I don't have a map that shows, let me see, well, this might be a better map to show. This would show, of course, the property where the Northfield Church is, and the Rogers Field Park are here in the upper right-hand corner, and that is adjacent to, I think that's what you're seeing there is part of, just a snippet of Big Station Camp Boulevard. So the plan in the, at least in the current Gallatin on the move plan, shows a greenway that will connect essentially Nat Caldwell Park over to the Rogers Fields. So that will provide that connection. Most likely, the alignment of that greenway will cross the old bridge there, and many of you may remember that old bridge, which the deck has been removed, but the supports are still there. It crosses the creek and gets on the north shore of the lake. As to whether or not that would be extended from that bridge on the north side of Nashville Pike to the intersection of Big Station Camp Boulevard, and then further extended east is, I don't know at this point. There are a couple of, there's a house, and I think it's converted into an office, it's right there on the corner.
Right.
And yes, a sidewalk could be built, and then there's another house or some business there on the bend of the creek. This blue line is essentially the center line of Big Station Camp Creek or Station Camp Creek. So it's possible, yes, that a sidewalk could be built, let's call it from Pilot View eastward on the north side of Nashville Pike down to Big Station Camp Boulevard and tie into the greenway, which would connect the two parks.
Well, and also associated with that thought process that I think bears consideration is that Westfield Development is supposed to have a lot of amenities that could be attractive to people on, that, you know, are wanting to do local shopping or what have you. So remember what the Westfield Development has proposed?
Yeah.
Yeah, it had some commercials up front.
Yeah, that's gonna be just the other side of Station Camp, so that's gonna be, you know, in addition to what's across 31 from them, that's also good. Yeah, that, that, like I said, that would be convenient, conveniences that would be within walking distance.
Well, I spoke with, with a representative, and he also, I believe, is wanting to provide a presentation to you on this, on the social service aspects of, a representative from Northfield Church, and one thing I talked about is the possibility of phasing the sidewalk as they further develop the property, so they don't have to build it initially, and that they would only build it in association with each phase of their development, so that would spread the cost out, and possibly even construct the sidewalk on their property within an easement as opposed to the TDOT right-of-way, so that would relieve them from having to get a permit from TDOT to construct the linear sidewalk, since it would be on their right-of-way, and it would allow them to, more flexibility and to avoid some of the grades that were discussed earlier, mentioned earlier. Nick might want to talk about the feasibility of doing that, but though, I know, of course, that's a, the probably, they might be plating this property, so that comes into play as well. Part of it already is planted at one lot.
Is there a representative here? From the church, he wants to speak?
Yes, I don't know if you can hear me, it's Bill Jacoby and Tom Hayden from Northfield Church.
We can hear you.
Good. I actually have some slides to share for on-screen. Is there a share-slide function you have to enable?
We can see something there.
Right now, at the bottom of your screen, you'll see a share-screen button. You'll just hover your mouse at the bottom of the screen, you'll see share-screen as an option.
Northfield Church, you're showing muted in case you're trying to speak to us.
There you go. That should do it.
See? We hear you and see you now, but we do not see your screen.
All right, we're coming up right now. How about now?
Not yet, no.
There's two steps when you share your screen.
All right.
Now it has started.
Yeah.
We're good now?
Yes.
Sorry for our slowness. As I mentioned, my name is Bill Jacoby, I work at Northfield, and Tom Hayden are senior pastors here with me. Thank you, mayor and city councilmen and women, and everyone who's on the call for allowing us just a few minutes to talk about the project that we're requesting the rezoning for. Just some quick background on Northfield. Northfield's a non-denominational Christian church, been in existence since 2009, started in Tom's house, and they moved into Knox-Doss for six years before acquiring the property that Bill was referring to from College Heights in 2016 after a remodeling project we opened up, and then in 2018, we added that adjacent partially referred to on Pilot View. We've been blessed throughout this time with significant participation growth. We've grown sevenfold since that period of 2016, and the mission of the church is important because it sets up what we're trying to do with our master plan. It's very simple, it's the two great commandments of love God and love people, and the great commission of make Jesus known. Part of how we've worked to do that is very significant involvement with the community, and this really began with, I'll say, large group gatherings where we had Easter egg, our Easter egg hunt annually, our trunk-or-treat function with thousands of people coming here, and more recently partnering with existing groups like the Stay Warm Shelter at First Baptist Winchester, and Minister Alston, and Derek Jackson and the team there, and getting other churches to work with us and with First Baptist Winchester to provide help for families or individuals that were in a housing crisis, were living unhoused and had no place to come from. But we've learned a lot about working with people that are in need through both partnerships in our own events, and then in 2019, we partnered with Habitat with the Apostles' Build, to do our first build with Habitat. On the other end of the spectrum, once people are more stable, to learn what it was like to participate in providing homes for people. At the same time we did that, we were involved about four years ago with an organization called the Tim Tebow Foundation and Night to Shine, and we began our involvement with families with young adults with special needs. This particular event is every Valentine's Day, it's a prom for special needs young adults. Over 400 volunteers work with us from all around the community to put this event on for the young adults and their families. It's a very special way to get to know people, families with young adults with special needs, and learn a bit more about where their need states are in their lives. From there, we've expanded that to a partnership with Gigi's Playhouse. It's an organization that's based out of Chicago, has a location down in Cool Springs that has outgrown their facility. It's a Down Syndrome Achievement Center for young adults with Down Syndrome and their families. It provides everything from activities by age group to tutoring programs. We've been doing that every Tuesday night at our church now for the last six months, it's been very, very successful. And then that led to us having a special needs service for young adults with special needs and their families once a month at our church. So the reason I bring that up is, as we went through this process over the last four years of being deeply engaged in the community, the question arose, how do we go even deeper and create community? How do we create a community where people feel not only welcome, but are open to share some of their deepest needs? And that led us to the assessment that I've got up on the screen right now. In looking at families with, that are in a transition state, they're either homeless or they're working and they can't yet afford a house, what were some of the unmet needs that they had that either organizations existed and just didn't have enough capacity to meet those needs, or were needs that simply were unmet? And you'll see with the red circles, some of the areas we identified that were not only opportunities for us as a church, but also opportunities to partner and expand on existing organizations that provided some of these services. The same thing was true with families for, with young adults with special needs. In some of these conversations, you learn things like, I don't have, the greatest concern I have as a parent is what will happen to my children after we pass away, who will take care of them, and wanting a plan for that. So we learned a lot from these interactions with the community, and then that led us to say, what could we do with the existing gifts we have with our 20-acre facility and the buildings we have to more deeply serve the community? Mayor Brown, I also wanted to throw in one slide here. I heard you mention at our Habitat Pafford Place groundbreaking about the classification that the United Way has called ALIS, which is Asset Limited Income, but Employed. This is the target population in addition to the young adults with special needs and their families we want to serve. These are people, individuals, or families where they're working, and they cannot yet afford the basic necessities like the cost of housing or mortgage or even rent in our area. It's the fastest single-growing segment in the state of Tennessee in Sumner County. So it's an area that we feel is a great place for church, city, and community to work together to serve, and that's one of the prime focus areas of our plan in our Sumner Center, and that's what Bill McCord was just, was just describing. So the master plan that we're sharing with you all as city council tonight has three phases. The first phase is to take an existing building we have, which has a gymnasium, commercial kitchen, and classrooms, and dedicate that to Sumner County, we'll be calling that the Sumner Center at Northfield, and I'll explain a few more details about that in just a second. The second phase is the addition of some frontage and building to expand our preschool and kids offering, including a functioning preschool that would have opportunities for families in need, in addition to families that had the ability to pay the full price. And then the third stage in the back is the addition of the villages. Now, I'll explain again more about villages in a minute, but the concept of villages is to have a connected community with families that are involved in our Sumner Center, either through our special needs programming or through our ALIS or asset limited programming, and provide them with a place to live for a year or two so that they can get on their feet and have the money to be able to afford to live in a place of their own. to be able to afford to live in a place of their own. So Phase One will actually hopefully be launching here in fall of twenty twenty-one. This is a remodeling project of an existing building. We've been working with Bill McCord and Jillian on the remodeling plans. Also Chuck Stewart and the folks and coaches were very helpful in getting us ready to get all of our permits going on this. So the plan will be to have this open in the fall of twenty twenty-one. This will be what I would call the nerve center of all of our activities with the community. In this particular Sumner Center, we'll have four types of programming. The, the first type will be for families that or individuals that are really unstable and have a daily food name. We'll have a deal of daily food needs. Sorry. We'll have a daily food pantry. We'll have the ability to work with them on mental health evaluations to see if there is a, a greater need than what we can provide to steer them in the right direction. We'll continue our work with Stay Warm Shelter and help provide places for people that need an overnight place to stay, especially in cold weather. And then we have some unhoused food box programs that we've developed that provides food for people that don't have electricity or any way to prepare food, but need a nutritional meal for a week. The second two stages are the stages for people that are in that ALIS category that I talked about earlier. We have a, a wonderful dentist in our community named Stephanie Harding. Dr. Harding has donated her entire dental facility equipment to put a dental clinic in our Sumner Center. This will provide dental services, especially for adults. Many families that are on ten care, the adults don't have access to dental care. And so this will provide a quarterly opportunity for people to receive dental care on our facility through a group of volunteers and doctors and hygienists that Stephanie and our volunteers from Northfield will pull together. We'll have legal counseling to help with families that have legal challenges or trailing spouses or other issues like that. And then basic counseling on how to develop a good budget so that you can save to be able to afford a place to live. And then the villages, which I mentioned earlier, is the other phase. Part of the villages curriculum will be to mirror what Kate Ritchie and the Habitat for Humanity folks have in place for families that qualify for Habitat Housing. So as they're in our Sumner County or Sumner Center programming, they'll be learning how to do a budget and how to have the right things in place so that when they apply for Habitat House, they'll be a qualified applicant for Habitat Housing in the future, areas like the Pafford Place neighborhood that we talked about earlier. And then last but not least, our special needs programming, expanding our Gigi's programming, expanding our work with Special Olympics, leveraging the village as a place that can be one of the units for a family to have a young adult live by themselves, but have someone that was observing how they were living on their own. So provide a solution for special needs families that want their adult to live independently and learn how to do that and know that they would be safe if that adult or parent was to pass away. So that's the scope of the Sumner Center. The other stage of this that I mentioned earlier was the villages. So the concept of the villages for us is a connected community. It's something very different because what most people that are in transition and most families with younger adults with special needs want is a sense of community. So the concept of this would be to have these units available for people in our program. It had that need either for a permanent place to stay if they were someone with special needs or a temporary place to live so they can get on their feet and qualify for a Habitat House or qualify for a place that they could live. And do that in a way where it was part of a qualified program that not just anybody could get into these units, but it was someone that was in our Summer Center programming or part of our community. So we knew them. We have a relationship with them. And with the Lord's blessing, we can get them on their feet and, and ready to go. This is the stage of our project that led to our rezoning request, the villages portion of it. So I think Andy Leaf from Greenlid is on our civil engineer and he's going to talk about the rest of the project and one area that we just talked about around the infrastructure necessary. I, I did want to mention before I turn it over to Andy that our goal in this discussion, we've been entrusted by members of this community with funds. And as we have this discussion, those contributions, those donations, those investments that people have made, we want to optimize their impact to serve the people that are in need in our community. So this part of the discussion is all about how do we make sure we optimize those investments people have made, be good stewards of those investments and make sure they're really going to the families that have the greatest needs. So Andy, are you on?
I am.
Okay, can we do the slide?
Yes, sir. So as Mr. Jacoby said, stated, what's driving this rezon request is basically the villages aspect of the project, but not only that, is, is he elaborated during his presentation, the many different uses that the church is wanting to do on this property. I advise them, and we feel like it's cleaner and, and better organized to be in the zoning, not the R twenty zone, but the MRO zone we're asking for. And as such, as with every project, as Mr. McCord stated, sidewalks come up and, and I'm no stranger to coming before you guys and, and arguing a point for or against sidewalks. And what we have looked at here is Mr. Jacoby stated, we're trying to maximize the investment. We're trying to maximize the potential impact on the community and how much the church can help. And when we looked at the area to the east of us is the lake. And as Mr. McCord brought out and Paige highlighted as well, the, the greenway system. I looked at that map before the meeting and the greenway goes on the north side of the lake, or at least that's where it's slated to go. Maybe it comes on the south side of the lake there, the north side of Nashville Pike. I know that the, the greenway map is mainly an idea and, and not, nothing is set in stone or concrete. And we feel like there are going to be challenges to connect this property to the east. Big Station Camp Boulevard and the creek and the bridge crossing there over the lake is one of them. And then what's highlighted on this slide as well is the Rogers Group quarry to the west. So the nearest sidewalk right now that we could tie into would be back at Kennesaw to the east on that side of the road. And also, the Westfield is going to bring a sidewalk down Big Station Camp Boulevard, but it's not going to come all the way to Nashville Pike. And then of course, to the west, you've got the Rogers Group property, which is unlikely to develop bringing trap, bringing foot traffic from the west back to this property. So for those reasons, we were wanting to try to maximize the, the internal connectivity of this site and not build the sidewalk across Nashville Pike. However, Planning Commission did not approve the plan that way. What we presented back to City Council, which is in your packet, was our interpretation of the, the comment, which was, we are showing a connection from Pilot View west to Gordon's Crossing. The church would obviously not, would rather not build any sidewalk along Nashville Pike. But we would like to explore some alternatives to building a sidewalk across the entirety of this frontage. So I'm here for any questions that you might have regarding the technical aspects of the project or anything else.
Andy?
Yes, sir.
Hey, you, so you said that that's what y'all came back with, right? From like Pilot View to the, um, connect where the crosswalk is, right?
That is in your packet, yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. I mean, I, I think that would be realistic instead of going across the whole property. Cause like you said, I don't think anything's going to develop the other way anytime soon.
That's what I was trying to say.
Yeah. No, you were saying take away the whole thing, weren't you?
No, I wasn't saying take away the whole thing.
No, I thought you were saying take away the whole thing.
So what are you saying, Craig? Cause I'm confused.
Well, and if you look at the map that Bill showed earlier, it showed it going from like the crosswalk section all the way to Pilot View on Nashville Pike. Not going across the whole property, taking it west towards Hendersonville.
Can you bring?
What does anybody else think about that?
That sounds real good to me and I'm really excited about this project. I think it's much needed in the community for sure.
Yeah.
Much needed.
What are you saying now, Craig?
Just, I mean, like, like Andy said, like it's presented in the packet where it comes up from the crosswalk goes to Pilot Knob.
Yeah.
Yeah, right there.
Right.
And then taking away the other part, the left side, I mean, the, yeah, the west side. Yeah.
Going toward Hendersonville.
Right.
So on the right side though, that's just kind of like a really unstable, I guess. Hilly part and I thought you were talking about going to a left side more so than the right side. So I'm confused a little bit.
The right side's going somewhere. The left side's not.
But where's the right side going to?
To the, what, what Paige was just talking about.
Potential, potential development.
Yeah.
Down here. Here's another, here's that aerial view. So it would be this part down here, she was talking about. So our, the sidewalk would come from Pilot View up to this Gordon Crossing light right here. And she was talking about development being down this way.
Yeah.
More this way.
Oh, okay. I thought, I'm, I'm, thank you. I'm, I see now what you mean. Well, I hope that they can get it worked out because we've been, you know, we've been hoping that somebody would come along and be able to do something like this to help so many people.
Oh, definitely.
I just think it's a wonderful asset to our community and
Yeah, it really is.
What they're doing.
Yeah. I agree a hundred percent.
I think it's going to help them do this.
I make a motion sitting down the council. I'll second that.
All right, any further discussion?
And we make some amendments at council if we need to about the sidewalk.
Yeah. Okay. All right, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Seven S's and zero N's.
Okay, thank you. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Northfield.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Everybody.
Thank you for being so willing to help, to help the area.
Yeah, thank you all very much.
Great.
Okay. All right, moving on to item number two, ordinance zero two one zero four dash two three, Mr. McCord. Bill, you're muted again.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Great. Let me get the screen back on. I have some problems here. Stand down. Okay, this next item is a request for approval of a preliminary master amended preliminary master development plan for Lowe's Home Center and approving a preliminary master development plan for Vinewood Townhomes on a seven acre portion of property located essentially behind and adjacent to the Lowe's Home Center. This was a site that was considered a couple of years ago for a, excuse me, for a hotel which was not approved. And about years ago, there was a plat filed for Lowe's Home Center and it included, of course, the Lowe's building and some out parcel lots, in this case Lot Two, which is the site of where the proposed Vinewood Townhomes would be constructed. Also Lot Three, which is a portion of where the detention pond for the Vinewood Townhomes would be constructed. And then of course, you've got the lots that are adjacent to Nashville Pike. The Vinewood Townhomes lot is Lot Two and that's the seven and a quarter acre parcel behind the Lowe's building. The property had been filled because of the cut where Lowe's was constructed and a lot of the dirt essentially was stacked up behind it. And that created this unusual shaped lot, but it's fairly flat on top, but it does slope off sharply to the north, east and to the south. To the south is the cottages condominium complex and to the east is Blue Jay Way and there's a medical office and a vacant lot off to the east. The applicant is proposing to develop a townhome development. And these would be owner occupied type homes. They would be for sale. And there's a very minor reduction in the lot removing some of the required yards because of the unusual shape of the lot. So what happens is that the retention basin, all the property, the water would drain and the street would drain to the southwest, which is shown on Lot Three. So only a portion of Lot Three is included. That's the reason for the amended master plan for Lowe's and this would be its own master plan, but it does amend it for Lot Three. The applicant is proposing a total of fifty of, of these lots and they would be condominiums. I'll show you what they look like here in a minute. And it would have landscaping that would be essentially the preserved slopes, which are heavily tree vegetated. And then there would be existing vegetation along the south boundary adjacent to the cottages that would be, would remain as well. And then there would be some supplemental landscaping. Essentially with, of course, interior to the project, but then adjacent to the entrance roadway, which comes off of Brown's Lane. This kind of shows you the additional supplemental landscaping that they would be adding adjacent to the bottom of the hill, adjacent to Lowe's and along the driveway coming off Brown's Lane. The units would be two story units. They'd have garages and brick facade. For the most part, there would be some battening, but brick facade fronts and then solid brick on the adjacent sides. So a color rendering of what that would look like is described here. The Planning Commission did review this request and recommended unanimously to, to prove, prove this townhome development and this master amended master plan and a preliminary master plan for Vinewood.
Any discussion?
Craig, I would like to say something. This, this piece of property, if you guys remember, that's what we voted down as far as putting the hotel motel on that all the citizens was, uh, upset about, but this actually to me is a continuation of what's actually over there. And it's not much of it. I mean, at this time, I support this development.
Jimmy?
Yeah, Craig. Bill, did you say this is going to be setting up high there on, on the top or are they going to dig it out and go down the, with the height of Lowe's? What did you say?
In this case, it is built up on a bunch of fill, but they have indicated to us that they would be removing about ten feet roughly. I don't know if exactly, we'll have to see what happens with the final master development plan, but they would be reducing the height of that fill as much as ten feet.
So these probably won't set up as high as the, as the townhomes or the condos that's adjacent to them, correct?
Well, they'll still be higher than the, than the condos down here.
Right.
It's down, down the hill from them. So they'll still be higher than that, but they won't be towering over it like the hotel.
Okay. I just want to say there's a couple of people that's texting me since we got on here that lives there in those, in those condominiums. They wanted to speak for whatever reason they couldn't get on. So I just want to let everybody know that this is just a committee meeting. You've got plenty of time to ask questions and I'd encourage you to call Mr. McCord's office this next week because we'll, we'll go to second reading next week with it. But we've got plenty of time, plus there'll be a public hearing before it's approved on second reading. So any questions you've got, I just encourage you to go to Mr. McCord and see if he can answer them. But I make a motion, we'll move it on to council.
One more question.
Got a motion in second. All right, and Jimmy, it's, I think we got first reading next week. You said second reading.
Right. I'm saying they got time to, to speak before second reading.
Yeah, but you said second reading was next week. Yeah. We got first reading.
I think John Day wanted to ask something.
Uh, that's okay. I, I'm just curious about the, about the exit, the outlet. Will that just be on Brown Lane or will it be on Nashville Pike as well?
No, we just connect to Brown's Lane where there's a current median opening there. They put a sidewalk in there not too long ago, so they'll have frontage to that sidewalk too.
Now I asked about the traffic at Planning Commission and was told that it shouldn't, where it's located shouldn't give us any problems.
All right, any other discussion? All right, roll call please.
Craig, I need the, who made the second. I have Overton made the motion, but I wasn't sure who made the second.
I did.
I did.
Okay, Fennell?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Seven S's and zero N's.
Thank you, Connie. All right, moving on to number three, ordinance number zero two one zero four dash two four, Mr. McCord. Thank you, Connie. All right, moving on to number three, ordinance number zero two one zero four dash two four, Mr. McCord.
Okay, this next item is a request to rezone, uh, two lots and a portion of a lot totaling two point three acres from the multifamily or residential, multi, multiple residential and office districts to the planned general commercial district with a preliminary master development plan for the Hangar Unlimited. The applicant proposes to, uh, rezone this property, uh, to a higher intensity type commercial use. This is immediately adjacent to Lowe's, essentially downhill from Lowe's along Blue Jay Way, uh, across the private street entrance to Lowe's from Blue Jay Way from the, uh, it's a recently constructed, uh, small shopping center. It's mostly remained vacant for a couple of years, uh, across from the driver's license testing center on Blue Jay Way. Again, it's zoned MRO now. They're asking for PGC with a preliminary master development plan. Uh, the reason they're asking for the zoning, and let me show you the zoning now. The purple is the planned general commercial zoning now. And this area outlined in red, uh, shown in red, outlined in yellow, would be the property that would be subject to rezon change, with the rezoning change. The, the master plan calls for construction of a multi-phase building. Phase one would be about half the building, a little more than half the building, which would provide, uh, for a customized car sales facility. Apparently, they would have, uh, their custom cars, uh, displayed inside their building. And so that'd be kind of unusual than what you see with a typical, uh, car sales lot. Uh, there would not be a lot of parking spaces associated with the car sales use. Phase two and phase three would provide for general retail and, uh, what they identify as an office and, uh, additional parking that would be provided on the south side of the building. This is, uh, more clearly shown here in this attachment to where the size of, of phase two is about six thousand square feet and phase three about twenty-six hundred square feet. The phase one building would be eleven, almost twelve thousand square feet, and it would include an indoor showroom for some of those cars. The, um, and then this is just another, it doesn't show the landscaping, unfortunately. They would be constructing the sidewalk, uh, adjacent to, uh, Blue Jay Way and extending it from where the shopping center to the north was constructed. It would be an easement as opposed to within the right of way. Again, this does a but, uh, M, uh, PGC zoning and MRO zoning to the south. The buildings would be similar to the little shopping center. As a matter of fact, these are photographs, uh, for, of the shopping center I spoke about earlier that's right next door. And so the architecture and the building size and configuration would be very similar, if not identical, to what was constructed right next door. So the planning commission did review this and after, uh, discussion recommends approval of this rezoning with this master development plan.
You might have any discussion?
Motion to send it to council.
I'll second that.
They have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven S and zero N's.
Thank you. All right, moving on to number four, ordinance number zero two one zero four dash two five.
Okay, and this last item I'll be presenting is a request for approval of an amended preliminary master development plan for Woods Common uh, for the Andy's Frozen Custard Restaurant. This is property that's on PGC. It's located on the south side of Nashville Pike, just west of Brown's Lane. Uh, it's essentially between, uh, the new Subaru place and the Sumner Bank and Trust. And, but it's up, uh, closer to Nashville Pike, adjacent to that private road that serves Subaru Place and, uh, wraps around to the, uh, east to Brown's Lane. Uh, this shows you kind of a configuration of the subdivision, resubdivision of the property. So we're talking Lot Two B uh, on this drawing here. Two A is the site of the Subaru dealership. The applicant proposes to build a small restaurant and with associated parking and drive-through lanes adjacent to that private drive, and they will have their two driveways, uh, their own off that private drive across Subaru Place. And this will provide for, uh, a, a small building which will have outdoor, uh, vending courses, drive-through. Uh, have a pretty complicated drainage pattern, uh, to accommodate some off-site flows and their detention area would be located, uh, on the easterly portion before it discharge, easterly portion of the site before it discharges into Nashville Pike. The landscaping would be, uh, placed, uh, interior to the site as well as within the retention basin and essentially around the buffer yards on the exterior of the site. The architecture of the building will be, uh, more like, uh, a retro, uh, ice cream shop that you would have seen in the fifties or sixties, uh, with a lot of glass facades and, uh, this marquee sign, uh, bleed sign, I think is what they call it. The remainder of the building would be, uh, brick facade and, uh, it would have recessed lighting. So, uh, it may, you, you will see it. Uh, it will be close up to the road, but it does comply with our sign regulations. I want to point out that, uh, the previous, the reason that the site's being amended is because the previously approved, uh, use was for tire discounters and this site was just not suitable for them. You can see the large building, the much larger building that tire discounters proposed with the previous site plan. So the planning commission did review this and the reason that you're seeing it as not, usually these amended plans usually get approved as a minor amendment. But in this case, they elevated it to a major amendment. So that's the reason that you're seeing this, even though the building is substantially smaller. So the recommendation from the planning commission is to approve this master plan amendment. And, uh, you have an ordinance that describes, uh, that recommendation with several conditions of approval.
Hey, any discussion?
Yeah, Bill, I've got a couple of questions. I know at planning commission, there was a lot of discussions about their lighting and about some, uh, neon lights and stuff, but they got all that worked out, correct?
Yes, sir. That's included in the, uh, plan that you see on your screen.
Okay.
We'll have, uh, that type of.
I'll second John Day.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any other discussion? If not, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven S and zero N's.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item number five, resolution number R two one zero four dash three five, Nick Tuttle.
Can everybody hear me now?
Aaron, Aaron is here in his place, y'all.
Okay.
Awesome, good. Sorry, I was having some technical difficulties throughout the first item. So item number five, this is the acceptance of public improvements for Village Green Crossing, section five, which includes a portion of Village Green Crossing near Tulip Popular Drive. And this was unanimously approved by the planning commission.
Motion to send it on.
Have a motion in a second?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven S and zero N's.
Hey, moving on to item number six, resolution number R two one zero four dash three six, and Aaron, you're up again.
Thank you. This is acceptance of public improvements for Greensboro Village North, which includes Merrimill Drive that connects St. Blaise Road to Greenlee Boulevard, and the planning commission unanimously approved.
Motion approved. Send it on.
Okay, motion second.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven S and zero N's.
Okay, number seven, ordinance number zero two one zero four dash two six. Aaron, you're up again.
Thank you, sir. So if you recall, on March twenty-third, I gave the results of the signal warrant study at the Cairo Road and Airport Road intersection and that it marginally warranted a traffic signal. Uh, we are budgeting a total project cost of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the design and construction. We intend to use twenty thousand from engineering's budget for design, and with this resolution, we would be asking for two hundred and thirty thousand be appropriated from the general fund for construction.
Aaron, I have a question. Um, what kind of timeline do you think this will move on? Because I don't, I don't think it's gonna move so fast that we couldn't just put this in the budget for next year. But I defer to you guys and your experience in, in, in these installation processes. Cause I saw that the planning was gonna come from your existing budget.
Correct, yes. So going off of the Blue Jay Way signal, um, from the professional service agreement all the way to construction was, um, about a year, maybe just a little bit over that amount. Um, talking to, to Nick earlier, it would be, um, our plan to go ahead and move forward with getting the professional service agreement for the design. That way, once the money is appropriated, then we could, um, move forward with construction. The biggest part is actually, um, getting the poles, the mast arms, um, to us. Those are typically an eight to ten month, um, out from when they're ordered. That's the biggest part.
Is all that paid in advance?
Um, I, I, I don't know the answer to that. When we would, um, we would have the, the bid and typically there are, are two companies that would bid on the construction, uh, of the signal. And so I don't know what their schedule is, and we basically pay that as things are completed.
Rachel's got her hand up. Maybe she can answer that for you.
Sure.
I just wanted to comment that we could do a next year purchase order. Um, if y'all are agreeable to fund this project, we could go ahead and issue a twenty twenty-two purchase order, which would allow engineering to go ahead and order the parts and get that process in the works, but we wouldn't pay for it until next year's budget.
Do you need a motion for us to do that, Rachel?
I would feel better if you did.
I, I would actually like to ask Rachel, what do you think is the most prudent way to move? I mean, we can do, I mean, we certainly can do it now, but what, what are you thinking, Rachel?
Does it matter?
Um, from my perspective, it, it doesn't matter. I, I understand their need to get the PO issued now because of the long lead time to get the, the actual items in. So we could do either one.
Mayor, if you don't come, if you're not objected to it, Mayor, I'd assume we go ahead and appropriate the money and get it done.
I don't care.
Motion approved. Send it to council.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven S and zero N's.
All right, item number eight, monthly financial reports for February. Rachel?
Yes, sir. Uh, in your packet are the monthly financials for February. We continue to do very well this year. I did add the sales tax graph for July through January. I keep waiting for it to get back down. Um, but it isn't yet. We're still performing very well with the sales tax collection. Um, all of our funds are in good shape. We'll need to make, um, amending entries before June thirtieth. Some of these paired up where new money's come in anticipated and if the money's implemented. Um, like for our shop with the cop program and, and smaller things like that, but I'll be bringing that to you probably in May.
Rachel, things look really good to City. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Rachel? All right, if not, anybody have any other business?
Craig, I got one thing. Uh, or, or, and I know we talked about this a few days ago, Mayor, you might answer this for me. Did we make the decision that our leisure service or Parks Department is gonna take care of Caldwell Park?
I thought we did.
Not Caldwell Park, Liberty Ranch Park.
Yeah, you know what I'm talking about.
I think Mr. Brown was just informing you that he was going to and that they were going to be handling it, but that there was going to be an impact on them. I just see where he has, um, potentially unmute yourself, David, if you want to chime in on this.
Yeah, we're prepared to start mowing and weeding.
Are you good with that? Are we good with that? We, it needs done.
Yeah, we're very, very grateful for that. And then I think there may be, you know, more support services needed, but remember, basically, Ms. Bates told us they weren't doing it anymore. So what choice do we have? I mean, um, it's a, it's a access that a lot of people are really enjoying. It's an amenity that I think we should all, that we probably all agree that we want to keep providing for the community. So. And I appreciate.
If I might, uh, this Thursday morning, the Board of Directors for the, um, Noon Rotary Club is meeting and discussing taking over responsibility for that. We have not made that decision, but I do know that that's on the agenda for our Thursday morning board.
But James, you're not taking over the mowing and stuff. You're just talking about, you know, supplying monies to, to do different things there, correct?
Correct.
You don't want to mow it, do you? You don't want to mow it?
No, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for asking.
All right.
Anybody else, anybody else have anything?
We appreciate the Rotary for that. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you.
Anybody else? If not, what about department heads? Any department head reports?
I have one. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. Uh, let me share my screen again real quick. This won't be long.
Scared.
Sorry. Can you see that?
Yep.
Okay. A couple of weeks ago, we talked about a, a potential park donation. And this is from the developers of the vintage Bakers Crossing apartment complex. They had indicated initially that they would be willing to donate this portion. I got shown on the photograph here, outlined in yellow, which was roughly four acres. The bulk of their, of their apartment complex would be built to the north of that. Uh, this was kind of the map that we showed you, the subject area down here on the bottom portion. And the northerly portion was where they're planning to build their, uh, apartment complex. This is the site plan generally that was approved by the planning commission, approved years ago, and then most recently reapproved by the planning commission. And so, uh, they have this leftover land that they don't really need, and it's mostly in a flood plain. Almost all of it's in a flood plain. But they've approached about maybe, uh, donating additional property adjacent to the creek that I've outlined here on this sketch in, uh, green. The apartment complex would be the area outlined in yellow, and the original area was the area, uh, below the pink line. And it's all adjacent to the creek. It's essentially all in the flood plain and/or floodway. It would also be the location of our future greenway that would be a crucial, uh, piece of property to have to be able to develop that greenway. The only thing that we'll need to do is, of course, I mentioned to them, they would need to include this property in any phase one environmental report they gave us. And we'd probably also need some sort of appraisal on it, even though it's a donation. And they would need to reserve some easements across the property for drainage and utilities. So if you're interested in us pursuing that, we can, uh, work from this point and, uh, discuss this at the final master development plan. and discuss this at the final master development plan, which will be discussed by the planning commission in later this month.
Bill, I asked Mr. Brown, was this going to be an asset, not a not a burden on us? And Mr. Brown said we could use it for parks. So as long as it's an asset and not a liability on us, I'm good with it myself.
Plus the greenway, you know, feature greenway, if it's going to go there, we already have the land, so yeah. Okay. Work with them.
As I, as I had reported last meeting, Mr. Brown indicated how much it would cost to maintain it. So assuming it's about double the size, it would probably be twice the amount that he estimated.
Thank you, Bill.
So what do you need from us, Bill?
I don't know that I really need a vote at this point. You've kind of given me direction, assuming that everyone's in agreement. It will be a later formal action once we get the master plan approved or reviewed and approved, that we will bring something to you later.
Does anybody object?
Certainly, under no obligation.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Any other department heads?
I still have another item or two. Sorry. I gave you all this list here, and this is about our traffic counts for the various locations throughout the city. I just want to make sure that you received it and it gives you a report on how traffic volumes are on various roads and what the carrying capacity of the roads, certain roads at Level Service D. So these that are highlighted in either orange or yellow indicate that the segment is over capacity or near capacity. It's just something to be thinking about. You might want to look at that and be thinking about when developing policies for the comp plan. And lastly, we've got a request from Sumner County to request waiver of the requirement for surety for the judicial center and the parking garage that they want to build. So I would like for y'all to make your wishes known there.
Yes.
Yes.
There's no reason for them to surety it's a county, they're going to build it, so.
Okay.
All right.
Is that kind of a consensus? Yes, I can take that as a yes.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Okay, thank y'all very much. That's all I have.
Anybody else, any other department heads? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Got a motion, second?
Second, thanks, Craig.
All right, we're adjourned.
Thanks, y'all. Y'all be careful, guys.
You be careful, Sean.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.